Thank you. We have communications. We had, now that we do have all members here, we could have discussion and we could also bring the sweepstakes internet cafe to a vote as far as making recommendation to city council. Paul, you missed the public hearing, there was no input.
Okay.
So, nothing, nothing has changed since the last time we spoke. And at the last, at our last meeting when we did review the changes to the zoning code, there was discussion, kind of went back and forth, but what we had sort of, the consensus was of the body, we don't make any changes, we like how this is written.
So, there'll be nothing in the business hearing?
Well, that's not for us to, we can make a suggestion to city council to look at that, but we can't really, we can't really write it for them. Unless they ask us to, I guess.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure they'll ask the planner.
And Paul has already gone in pretty far in that as well. And then, I think he wants to ask Pat Langs.
So, we're narrowing, narrowing the sexually oriented business. Did not change the, I don't know.
Yes. Did not change the 1,000 feet from items one through six and did not change the 500 feet from any landmark or historic district. We did not, what the discussion was previously, where was, do we make them, do you add a sexually oriented business line to the sweepstakes and add a sweepstakes to the sexual, and that was decided, not that this was narrowing this area allowed in the city insufficiently to the cost.
That's still allowing them to locate?
Yes.
You're also adding two definitions, the zoning code 231001, and adding to table B, for off-street parking requirements.
Okay, yeah.
And the addition to the parking is one parking space for each computerized sweepstake device.
So, any other questions, comments, discussion?
I move that we recommend these changes to city council.
Okay. So, there's a motion to recommend 230407A13, adding these items. I can read it aloud one more time, but the mayor already did that earlier. What's the, the general feel? People like to hear it? Let's go ahead, since this is our last recommendation to city council, if you will, take the time. 230407A13, sweepstakes internet cafe business uses. A, a sweepstake internet cafe business shall not be operated or located on any parcel within 1,000 feet of, one, any building which is used primarily for religious worship and related religious activities; two, a public or private school as defined in chapter 2310 of the zoning code; three, a boundary of any residential zoning district; four, a public park as defined in chapter 2310 of the zoning code; five, any public library; or, six, any other sweepstakes internet cafe business. B, no such business shall be located on any parcel or operated within 500 feet of any landmark or historic district; C, such business shall only be located in B3, a planned unit development, or an M-zone manufacturing; G, for the purpose of this section, measurements shall be made in a straight line without regard to intervening structures or objects from the nearest portion of the building or structure used as part of the premises where a sweepstakes internet cafe business is conducted, to the nearest property line or the premise of a church or school, or to the nearest boundary of an effective public park or residential district; H, for the purpose of this section, the distance between any two sweepstakes internet cafe business shall be measured in a straight line without regard to intervening structures, objects, from the closest exterior wall of the structure in which each business is located; J, any sweepstakes internet cafe business lawfully operating on the effective date of section 23040713 of this code, that is in violation, shall be deemed a non-conforming use. An internet cafe sweepstakes business lawfully operating as a conforming use is not rendered a non-conforming use by the subsequent location of a church, public or private school, residential district, public park or library within 1,000 feet, or landmark or historic district within 500 feet of the internet cafe sweepstakes business. When a non-conforming sweepstakes internet cafe business use of a structure, building, or premises is voluntarily discontinued or abandoned for more than six months, the structure, building, or premises shall not thereafter be used except in conformity with regulations in the zoning district in which it is located. Fourteen, other uses, any other use which is determined by the BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals, to be the same general character as the above permitted uses, but not including any use which is first permitted in the M-zone or which is prohibited in the M-zone. We also are going to be adding, the recommendation is also add to the zoning code the following definitions under 231001. Computerized sweepstake device, any computer, machine, game, or apparatus which upon the insertion of a coin, token, access number, magnetic heart, or similar object, upon the payment of anything of value when a product or service is provided, may be operated by the public generally for the use as a contest of skill, entertainment, or amusement, whether or not registering a score, and which is not gambling under the state or local laws. Machines designated for use by the state lottery commission are not computerized sweepstake devices for purposes of this chapter. A little misnomer there. Sweepstakes internet cafes, also a definition will be added, any premises upon which any computerized sweepstakes device is located for the use or entertainment of the public, whether or not such premises have other purposes of any nature whatsoever. The final recommendation would be to add to the zoning code table B, an additional off-street parking requirement for sweepstakes internet cafe. So, that use would require a minimum of off-street parking of one space per computerized sweepstake device. Mayor?
I notice in J, it talks about discontinued use of the non-conforming structure for six months. Is this a normal one year, or is this?
Of the, of a regular structure, it's a year, yes, but.
Okay.
Sexually oriented, it's six months.
Okay, so we're sticking to that, that's, yeah, okay.
Again, this originally, this sort of framework for this legislation was the sexually oriented business regulation, which was crafted by city council as well, so should have some legs if it gets recommended to city council. Those are the recommendations. Is there a motion to second?
Yeah, I first did so.
Oh, you fir-
I made the motion, sorry.
I would, oh, Paul, a second, and that's in case a further discussion. Okay, all those in favor of making the following recommendations, 230407A13, adding a couple definitions under 231001, and amending the off-street parking requirements, say aye. Any opposition? Okay, no opposition. Any other discussion on internet cafes?
Do you want to read the business code, too?
It could be the business code.
Might be.
I do have requests, if, we might want to put the business code on the website as well, city website, as the draft of what we're talking about there.
I can do that.
Just for, for public's comparison, if needed. It's not ready for prime time, I know, but.
No. Well, and you would like to see where the state is heading with it, too, so we're not, city council isn't having to craft legislation twice.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, the next item, we have communication powers. I think you had given, provided us the model code, and I know, we just wanted to see where you were on sort of amending it to this city path and its purposes.
I'm still working on it.
That's fine.
I do have, I've got two, two things I wanted to suggest. One is based, is unrelated, but related. There would be a consideration, if the planning commission thinks it's worthwhile, to look at satellite dishes. Other communities do regulate them, and in relation to setbacks and fronts and all that, I don't know if we, if that's an issue or not. This would be like the direct EV types, the smaller ones that we see. The other thing I've got here is specifically related to wireless, and that's to address how you fund taking these things down if they're abandoned. And I did find what appears to me to be an excellent, best practice, which would be to charge a bond of $100 per foot for the tower up front, and that is retained as a security bond. And so, if it's abandoned, the city then would have money to hire somebody out to take it down.
Okay.
That's been used in several other communities, it seems reasonable. If you're dealing with 150-foot tower, $15,000, which-
That's about right.
Probably sounds about right to tear something down that high, and then remove it from sight, so. That's just a suggestion, I had to address that. The other part I was working on, we did have a conversation relating to grandfathering of existing. I did find that some other cities in Ohio do have sunset rules on grandfathers for wireless towers, and it's 10 years after the adoption of the ordinance, anything that's non-conforming has to be torn down and moved, and, yeah, it has to be conforming. I don't know if that's needed in Athens or not, it did occur to me that potentially we could address that through the annexations. I know, RJ, you had questions about how would we address, if there's an existing tower in the township and the city annexes, does that land in, and it's now non-conforming, are we just going to allow that? And so, maybe that would be a way to address that issue with something that we annex in, that there's a sunset only on those. I'm not sure whether that's legal or, or not, but seems like we can add some, we can, we can address that if you guys want to. And I'll be putting all this together hopefully for the next planning commission meeting.
Good. Mayor?
I don't have the document in front of me. In our power ordinance and discussion here, did we have, let me try to run through it right now, did we have a section in here in terms of inspections, regular inspections? I can't remember if we did or not.
In the model?
In the model.
I did not double-check that because we didn't bring it up in December, but let me-
Well, when you brought up the bonding for a abandoned tower, or, I don't know what else you want to call it really, I guess, that, I like the idea of having that in place, I guess, because again, what we're seeing in some condemned house situation, the cost of condemning houses comes in front of us. In terms of the grandfather status, I believe the, there is a 10-year rule for signage, because the concept is that some non-conforming signs will fall out of, will naturally be placed eventually, and if they're non-conforming, it's not like a permanent house, a structure. So, I could see where that would also apply, if you wanted to go with the non-conformity, the loss of grandfather status over a certain period of time. But I'm not sure how far you want to go ahead.
There is a reservation of authority to inspect wireless telecommunications facilities, that was included, Mayor.
Okay. Who would be, if the city would be inspecting, or who, they would have to, yeah, because I'm thinking like the city inspects, you know, houses or buildings and-
No, I do not plan on having the city staff-
Yeah, that's-
Too specific for-
Right.
Or you get that engineering firm that-
Fire, you may though, Paul.
Pardon me?
From a fire standpoint, you might want the fire department to be, have access to inspect to see if there's any fire-
I'm sorry, I just meant they wouldn't be climbing the tower, they would have this in case.
Oh, certainly not, yeah.
Oh, come on. Yeah, John and Andy would be training the tower.
Well, I assume that you're saying that there would have to be documentation that had been inspected every few years.
Yeah, I don't know who does that on those type of things. I don't, the state does, my knowledge, not the state building department, that's done probably by one of these engineering firms that we're talking about contracting, contracting with anyways, to do the review process, so.
It's almost like you would have to require, I mean, can you require an inspection report every five years or something, has to be provided as part of the piece?
The permitting.
Yeah.
And I think we've had our tower up in Roseville inspected already, and that's contract with a private-
Correct.
You know, company, so the, the burden would be on the company that owns the tower to inspect, regularly interview.
Give us a report.
Yeah, yeah, I would like to see some sort of inspection written into the permitting legislation process.
If that were the case, who would be inspecting, the inspectors, though, as far as like if an outside company was hiring their own people to, to inspect it, then-
And I guess you could require that third-party inspection.
Right. Third-party inspectors, and have to be certified to do such an inspection.
Somebody who's certified, and if they're signing off on it, then they're liable for, if they're misrepresenting what they inspected, which is what engineers generally do, when they stamp a drawing, they're saying that it's engineered.
We had a full engineering review done of our Roosevelt tower, and they're, not likely jeopardized their certifications.
I think we also talked about two things, like in section seven, I know some of you don't have the, but the-
Pretty much, me too.
A, where it says the city's fire, police department, Department of Transportation, other public service facilities owned and operated by the local government are exempt from the ordinance in section seven. Is that something, again, that we could have wording, that at least the city administration would be presenting this to the city council for approval, to create some transparency to avoid a Roosevelt-type problem for any future city administrations? Also, D, I think the, we had talked about the idea of maybe offering a maximum height on private non-commercial radio and television reception and citizens' bands, just to avoid people who basically can create, I guess-
Respect towers?
Yeah. Or Watts towers.
Which one could they use?
Well, you have, you know, a couple, a couple local radio stations that, you know, operate, I guess, nonprofit from the DFCC, and just in terms of maintaining a sort of maximum height on, on how big a private individual's tower could be.
Do we actually distinguish between private and companies here?
Well, I mean, if you say-
Under D, you time mark.
Under D, yeah, where it says facilities exclusively for private, non-commercial radio and television reception and private citizens' bands.
Excluded.
Licensed, are excluded, licensed amateur radio, and other similar non-commercial telecommunications.
We may have to do a little research to determine why it's in there with the exclusion.
I thought there was a section code about the height.
Am I, are you saying, RJ, are you concerned about it in relation to like public radio and nonprofit radio, that's not-
Well, no, just in terms of like what we see here, as far as like-
Like a homeowner, if they put up like a ham radio and tower, that they-
Yeah, when I, when I lived in Florida, like some of the, the ham radio towers could be pretty daunting there, you know, it's just in terms of maintaining a maximum for them, as opposed to just letting them be excluded totally from-
I don't know, I don't, I don't, I can't think of anything that's currently in the top.
I thought there was a height limitation somewhere in the zoning code for-
Yeah, they would, they would not be exempt from zoning code, they're just exempt from this wireless communications ordinance, they'd still have to-
I'd have to check on that, though.
Yeah, me too.
We could, we'll look into that, yeah, I'm not-
Yeah, I guess it's just to make sure that where they are in zoning, there is a height restriction.
I'm trying to remember where it is, but I thought I saw one many years ago. As for the city's side of it, I don't know, council will know about it anyway if we have to spend the money. By definition, I needed, they knew about it when we did the Roosevelt.
Perhaps, I mean, there are, you know, we have critical communication devices that at different times may fail and need replaced, and I'm not sure that it would want to be locked into restrictions as it relates to those emergency communication devices.
Restrictions being like approval or disapproval from the council, or?
We have to be able to function, so I guess I want to get a little feedback on that first, so.
Yeah, section seven has the exclusions. All right, well, is there any other comments or discussion, or questions made? Otherwise, Paul will continue to take our comments to heart to crafting the Athens model ordinance.
Do you think the dish part should be in there, or?
I, I see that as a sep-, or is, are you suggesting this as a part, or are you seeing it as a separate?
I saw that as separate, possibly in zoning code.
Yeah.
It was just, we don't really address it. I don't hear people really complain about it. There's certainly communities I've driven through in Ohio and other places where there's just a proliferation of those, especially if they don't have good cable.
Right.
Wired cable access, and they, you know, they, they don't look that great. Personally, I don't think, personally, I don't think they look that great sometimes, and if we think it's a, if we think it's something maybe we want to look at, that was reasonable regulation that I found, but it's all going to be internet in a few years, anyway.
I think the perception these days, when the satellite dishes were 12 feet and 10 feet wide, that was a problem. They've been shrinking all this time.
Right.
And I think most people see it as an improvement, and everything's gotten better, and that is intrusive.
Yeah.
I mean, historically, they used to be monsters, and I know there was discussion where they, they put one on a front lawn versus a back lawn and the top of a house. So, I, I don't know, it's a, standalone probably is where we want to go with that, but again, I don't-
Yeah, I don't see it as a big issue right now.
It's not an issue, we don't have to worry about it, as far as I'm concerned, it just, I came across it when I was doing some research and thought it was going up.
Makes sense in light of what we are discussing, so I understand that. Then, what, I guess, what do people think about the suggestion, then, we discussed a little bit up this sort of sunset, I mean, is this something we want to see in the ordinance as well, is that all current towers within 10 years have to be conforming, and then, Eddie, once a tower is annexed, 10 x, 10 years after the annexation, it should become conforming if, to a, to the wireless ordinance?
I don't really have an issue with it, because the way these things are changing, 10 years may indeed require-
Right.
-that tower to be replaced, guy wires changed out and everything.
Right. So, it's something that they could do in a routine maintenance as well, let's, let's hope. And I think we are also crafting this ordinance with, there's not a lot of towers in Athens, so we probably should kind of craft it with the ones that are here in mind as well. I mean, I guess the one, maybe that's the condition where you could look at, on the exclusion of the cities, maybe that's something we can look at as like, you know, 10 years it has to be, if not, but I know Andy wants to upgrade his towers, so.
Did we have any follow-up with the university as far as their open spaces, their plans to possibly to include more towers?
Are most of their towers just on the RTB building?
The ridges.
Well, they'd also talked about, if I'm not mistaken, like the, the property closest to Athens Gardens, out on West State.
There's been a proposal to both the university and the city for a request to place a tower there, and High University is aware of the pending ordinance and the changes in the planning commissions, looking at this. So far, neither of us have committed to taking that next step with this.
How would that work, if, are they leasing the land, I mean, is it based on the ownership of the land, or the ownership of the tower?
Ownership of the land, it would be the less sore, who would receive the income on a monthly basis.
Okay, so they would then have to be wedded to the ordinance, whereas if this university were, were purchasing the land, it's-
Well, the way it's currently written, if they third-party it, earned for profit to an outside organization, they still have to comply with our regulations.
Okay, that's why.
Oh, like all that development on East State Street, that's, that's all for-profit, university owns the land, but Al Martin, everybody else had to bring, you know, that's, they can't just say, oh, we're exempt as an educational institution.
Right.
That's not educational, that's-
So, it doesn't, it's more the purpose or use so much than it is the land or the actual building?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Just want to clarify that. Okay.
And that's not tax exempt either, am I correct? You have to pay real estate taxes on, or ground rent of sorts, I believe, too, if it's for-profit, if it's AT&amp;T or Sprint or somebody, they have to pay ground rent tax on that.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Well, it doesn't sound like there's strong impetus for the sunset, I mean, I guess it's something to look at. I mean, I think the, you, RJ had originally brought up the annexation issue, more so than probably the towers that are currently here, so that might be what, where the sunset clause comes in. Okay, any other discussion, wireless communication test, or some, how to use magic?
I do have one more communication, actually, that's not on the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
Mark Spezza, who's a property owner, owns a 79-acre piece of land near Pepsi Rock, out far East State Street, he is, it's, it's in the township, it is not incorporated. He has submitted a application to the county commissioners requesting annexation into the city of Athens. He will be going before the county commissioners on May 10th.
Okay.
Prior to that point, if city council is interested in accepting an annexation of that land, they do have to work out which type of services the city would provide for any annexed land, generally police, fire, sewer, and water. So, I have sent a request to some city staff to review the, the request and see if there's any issues with that out there. If city council accepts the, recommends annexation, no, excuse me, if the commissioners on the 10th are fine with the annexation, they will forward it to Debbie Walker, the clerk of council, and then council will deliberate on that over the summer at some point. The planning commission would be required to recommend to council the appropriate zoning. He has requested R3 zoning, I do have a map here of what Mr. Spezza is requesting, so if anybody would like to look at it now, we can, or after the meeting, or at any point, I can provide that to you guys, so.
And he's, the discussion, of course, with Mr. Spezza is whether he's annexing 40 acres or the entire 70 plus.
Part of it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And he's talking about R3 possibly, as well as open space, and there's a little bit of debate on that.
Wait, so we're not sure what he's requesting?
Well, why don't I just bring it out, so we know?
I know, Mark Spezza spoke to us before, and we had given this sort of consensus that, you know, we would be, it didn't seem fit to annex, but I can't remember where he had landed on how much was going to be annexed versus how much would remain.
Some of this is rudimentary that I did. What he has requested, what he has submitted to the commissioners is to basically have all of this that's in the red box annexed at this point, with this section coming at a later time, being heat restricted as open space and zoned as open space.
Basically, the ridge being-
Correct, right, this is the ridge top, as you can see the 5-foot concentration. This is about 40 acres right here, this is roughly 39, and this is my, this is not to scale concern me, but it's pretty close, I try to eyeball it. There certainly is flat land, but down here, you can see based on the contours, there's also a creek right in here during heavy rains.
Why are they not asking for it right now, annexation for that?
Like, he's not going to develop it.
I think that's probably part of it, but I'm not 100% sure.
See, that would be-
Yes, what did you ask?
I just-
Why, he's not asking for this to be annexed in right now, either.
See, I didn't, this would go to my point about like, okay, can you put cell towers, right now, he could put cell towers in there and make additional money.
One of the issues is if he doesn't annex that portion in, is going to be access to that property. If he splits it off, his only entrance is that drive, and he has to get a, yeah, well, that's it, he has to get an easement from an adjacent property owner.
Right there.
And that's been, I know he's been discussing that. I think our preference would be that the entire area be annexed in.
Yeah, if you're going to do- Yeah, if you're going to do it.
Not looking at it. If he did, he'd have to go through a lot split. Does he have road access?
No, that's about it.
Right there would refuse a lot split in all likelihood.
Of course, he has to get, you know.
He owns this right here.
Yeah.
Andy owns this.
It's just so straight up.
It is.
It's like, I don't know if you ever, you know, do anything, but it costs a lot of money to develop the ridge line there.
But technically, this doesn't abut the city itself then?
Right.
Without, I mean, without, just that one strip?
It's all city, right?
Yeah, this is all city.
Is this right here?
No, no.
That's over.
The big white.
Where left?
The big one that looks like a cat hanging down.
He's separating it right here.
Yeah.
He's not going to, this is the ridge.
You said your preference is that he asked for the entire, barring that, would step two be though?
There's a trail route there.
That getting annexation would be contingent on?
Water.
This being?
First, he has to get past the county commissioners on this. And then, and then council has to make a recommendation of what services they'll give. I can't speak for council, but I suspect they would like to see the entire area annexed. They'd be a little bit theory about not annex, having, you know, they don't like the idea of having these little pieces coming into the city like this anyway. So the idea of just making this either a sharper, you know.
That side's been a concern for a lot of city residents. I'm sure we all heard some of the issues with that. This is, this whole big chunk right here is zoned R1, but it's actually deed-restricted. The state of Ohio, it's owned by the city and it was purchased using Clean Ohio funds. So this whole piece right here, we've got trails on it that connect to Strouds and all of that. This is all state land right here, part of Strouds Run State Park. This is deed-restricted, so that it can't be developed. This here is not, but then they've done some extraction that's under there too.
Well, I guess, then my other question is unless this was all annexed, then is that possible that this could be sold to this developer over here?
Yeah, it's possible.
And then combine?
Yeah. Yeah.
Again, you said this is not part of the city.
Anything shaded in, that's all city, and then this is the only piece that's not. And then Strouds right there is not.
Yeah, the color parts are actually the zoning color. Not the same tints as up there, but close enough, so that gives you an idea of what the zones are. The red there is an R3, I believe, right?
Yep.
So we have a different mix of it.
Yeah, this is all B3 right there. All that B3, that's manufacturing. R3, R2 and R1.
The city owns that R1, no one?
Right. With the exception of this carved-out piece right here is owned by Bren Hayes.
Okay.
This is just in the works, just so you know.
Okay. So thank you for that, Dave. I thought we had a communication as well if you'd like to.
I think I gave everybody one of these. I attended the Armory meeting weeks ago. Nicholas was there. One of the things that I've been looking at, I've talked about the idea of office space in the Armory and that kind of met with sour looks, but really, one of the things that I've really come across in the last few weeks is what they call flexible community workspaces. I've got some newspaper articles here and also this particular country or company, Bureau Miami, just some basic information about what they do with their current facility down in Miami. I think this is a terrific idea to look at because, number one, it keeps the building active all the time. It's an opportunity for small entrepreneurs in this town to be able to have a facility not just as a desk or an office space, but as a network, networking-type possibility. I see that it's something for students, for instance, grad students or young entrepreneurs who would like to get something going and really don't have a lot of space in their apartment or their home where they're at to be able to go. There would be certain shared resources, but basically, it's the idea of divvying up space where people can get in there and begin to do business for themselves. In one of the points in the article, one of the articles, it stresses that while there's a lot of people who prefer to be independent entrepreneurs, at the same time, they don't like working alone and they like the concept of being around other people, the pricing that this particular company is offering down there, it's on the second, or yeah, third, second sheet, I'm sorry, they're reasonable prices for people who are just starting out versus having to spend a lot of expensive amounts of rent to get started. Gives them more opportunity to put more dollars into ventures that they're attempting to do. I like the idea, too, of, you know, when you talk about the theater, whatnot, you're still talking about limited use. You're still talking negatives in terms of parking. With something like this, you're talking about actually the location becomes a positive and not a negative in terms of parking, in terms of some of the other things that we're talking about. It's, I think, creating a great tempo. It's perfectly located for students and non-students to be involved in. And, you know, I think it might be something that I would like to see people at least seriously look at. It would still be something that could be operated by a private management company, but what they had in here was kitchens, they had workout facility spaces in addition to renting out a communal table or divvying up space for private use, things of that nature. I know the mayor always talks about where we're going to get the money, but, you know, it's something that I'm thinking in terms of it would probably be more of a startup on a theater than it would be something like this. I think this also falls into the idea of breaking down the misperceptions that a lot of people do have, particularly among the business community, that the city of Athens is not business-friendly. And whether, you know, you agree with that or not, it's still a perception. Something like this, I think, would be very vital. As I said, I like the idea that it can be used seven days a week, 24 hours a day, as opposed to if you had the Armory being used as a theater where you have a couple productions a month, maybe. You know, and I also didn't really care for, when one of the presenters was talking about, well, we would leave the community out of this. This would be basically professional theatrical, professional musical activity, and we would leave Arts West alone. You know, I think that, you know, the idea that if you're going to have a theater like that, then the community does have to be involved. And if it is involved, then really, why do you need the facility, for instance, at Art West?
I think we might be a little too far down the road with the use area and what was presented at that meeting. We haven't even reconvened as a, the only question I would ask, you know, just skimming this, this sounds like a really good idea, but do you see something like this as being in direct competition with what the Innovation Center does today? They, the Innovation Center specifically does things just like this at a very discounted price to local startups who do not have to be attached to.
I don't think there's any, you know, could you technically say it rubs them a little bit? Perhaps, but at the same time, what this is offering is location. It's offering, you know, if we did something along the lines of the prices that you see there, you're also talking about being able to break a facility of like this down to conform to what the people inside of it want it to be and what, as opposed to what they have to accept in terms of space, things of that nature. I, you know, the whole idea that this gentleman is really trying to convey also is the fact that this type of a workspace community really kind of shapes itself, as opposed to somebody coming in there saying, this is what you get specifically. It really takes on a life of its own, a community of its own. And, yeah, I think it really fits into, as I said, a lot of people who want the networking capability as well. And I don't know that you get that up at the ridges where there's only a select few people. You know, I, I won't get into what, you know, as far as the Innovation Center, but, you know, that people have been critical of that in the past as far as who it serves.
People are critical of everything.
Well, they're critical of everything, but RJ, I think we have enough theaters. I think we have, you know, I think we pay attention to.
I think this is probably a discussion, I think you should be involved with the ad hoc committee that Chris Paul would like to have through Planning and Development of Council. And I, I don't know if what you're suggesting has merit or not. I don't know if the theater suggestion has merit or not. I don't know if the historic, I don't know if any of these things that people are talking about have any merit. Market studies would need to be done. The building needs to be dry, first of all. We've got a significant funding problem at the city level. We've got to get the building shored up, and so we're looking at short-term right now. And any of these are, we're talking five, 10, 15 years down the road, I think, is a safe assumption, but this may have merit. This might be the right use for it. I don't know. But I think you should be involved and with these other people who want to be involved with finding the proper use for that building and discussing that within that. I think these decisions, they need to be made on a community level. We've all got great ideas on things, but it needs to be fully vetted.
Well, this is the planning commission, so I'm suggesting, I'm making a planning suggestion.
Right.
Okay, I appreciate it.
I'm with you on that.
Community involvement, but I'm entitled to make a community suggestion on my own here, being on the planning commission.
I'm not trying to.
The things that I'm hearing so far that, you know, as far as usage for the Armory are, so far down the road, you say, you know, 10, 15 years, you know, how does that building hold up for 10 or 15 more years without additional, you know, cost to the city anyway?
That's what we're trying to figure out.
Well, you know, I, you know, just, you know, naturally, I think the logic of it is that, you know, the less you do to a building, the quicker it begins to break down, the more expensive it is in the long run.
RJ, we do, I would like to enter, we recognize that, but indeed, we do have, you know, like every other city in the nation, and particularly in Ohio, funding restrictions. And the first step, and I have to agree, is to kind of shore that building up so no future damage can occur. And I believe that any of these possible ideas are going to take planning. It's not going to happen next year, or, you know, there'll be, you know, planning probably, possibly in phases, so. But I think that that's an excellent idea, that you, we can actually with a group, the ad hoc group, that's kind of looking at more long-term planning. And we'll continue internally to, you know, try to fix our roof and, you know, that place secured so that we don't have further damage.
I'd be interested to see how this differs from any office space on Court Street right now. I don't know what the capacity is, what the percentage of fill is for the office spaces on Court Street. I look at something where Saratek used to be about fall, as far as I know, that is empty. I know I've had discussions, I think, with Mr. Phillips a few years ago, how they were always, it was always difficult to get businesses in. And actually, he wasn't, he was basically saying it'd be much easier for him to turn it into residential than to office space. I do not know, I tell you this, I don't know what other people have in terms of their, you know, their requirements on Court Street. We have quite a few residentials that are coming in, but we've also realized lost office space. Now, are we trying to fill the need here, or is it just that it doesn't fit the character that we have on it, or the desire to be as an office space within Court Street? And again, I realize that the bank was at People's Bank on the corner there, that used to be office space above, no longer, it's residential. I don't know. You know, I think it's a good idea. It's intriguing. When I was looking at this, I was unclear whether we were talking about residential versus office or a blend of them, and how, and then it does come down to price per square foot.
Well, Andy, and I agree, there are some privately-held spaces that could fit this built to some degree. Why they don't get involved in this, I don't know. I don't know if they're even familiar with something of this concept.
They may be, or they're listening.
Maybe out there listening, you never know. But, you know, I think that, you know, when I've talked with a couple of private entrepreneurs, one of the things that they've used the word lonely. It's just like, you know, I like to have a business of my own, but occasionally, it does get lonely. Occasionally, I would like to network more with people. And, you know, if the community is trying to stimulate more business, then, you know, I think it's an opportunity, again, to look at this. I think that we have a lot of theaters. I think we have a lot of things of that nature. And I just basically, today, just wanted to throw something out that was an alternative to more theaters. You know, I think Paul and Paula, I've, you know, talked before about where I thought if you're really doing a theater concept, where the best place would be. And that may or may not ever be available, but, you know, with something like this, with the location, you know, I just think that it might be something that the community would want to look at a little bit more. And, you know, I think what they were talking about was they hang art in there. I mean, so we're appealing still to the art community. We're doing different things. It really sounds like a flex, a building that takes on a lot of flexible use. And I think that that fits into maybe something that I certainly would like to see Athens turning into in terms of being flexible in the commercial world as well as just having it as residential or having it as a theater again. Because again, to flip it around, does the, as much as they were attempting at the meeting to keep that distance, you know, couldn't you say that the theater concept kind of conflicts with what the Stewart Opera House is doing up in Nelsonville? So you're talking about, you know, that regional thing and you're talking about that regional conflict. So, I mean, you're going to, as you always said, there's always going to be critical criteria.
It's my understanding on that specific question that the folks who run Stewart's fully supported that discussion of the Armory and thought that was actually, complimented them very well.
As a theater.
As a theater, yeah.
But if they were making money as a theater, then plan B is you start to bring in folk acts, rock groups, what, musical acts, and then I don't think Stewart Opera House would feel quite the same way. But anyways, food for thought.
Yeah. I would make, one suggestion might be, like, we had this sort of sign, rental sign task force, which was good at trying to bring people who had specifically affected together, neighbors and as well as the rental landlords or management companies. Is that maybe, you know, we could suggest sort of a task force that gets together with, you know, I guess landlords again, but not for rentals, but for, you know, leased spaces, commercial spaces on things that they could do to be, you know, more innovative with, you know, the spaces that aren't being leased currently.
You mean, as opposed to this?
As opposed to the Armory, yeah, separate. So more about the uses of the commercial spaces could be a lot more innovative than they are right now.
This would really require just a discussion with the Uptown Business Association.
Yeah.
I believe they meet next Wednesday at 8:30 a.m. I would be happy to provide this to them, and if you'd like to speak with them, you should, you should come to the meeting and talk.
Because you need, the thing is, you need someone that actually has the capital to do it and also the leasable space that's available, and it sounds like unfortunately there is a lot available.
Well, I don't know. I mean, that's the thing. The best thing would be to poll the Uptown Business Association, say, you know, what is out there right now? I don't, I really don't know. I haven't, I'm not shopping for office space myself, Mr. Paul, so.
That's a good thing right now, right?
Yeah, right. But, you know what I mean? In other words, there may be, this may be a great idea, so maybe take it and run with it. You know, you show up at the Auburn, they're going to say, not a good idea, and they walk away. Next, you know, two months from now, you're going to see this advertisement. You know, but at the same time, I don't know what's out there. I just, I, I'm aware that we have office spaces right now, and I know the trend in general has been replaced, residential has been replaced every time.
This would be sort of approached as an alternative to converting to?
Matter of surprise on West State Street. I mean, that used to be a full office, now it's residential in the back. You know, so, and I don't know. You know, this is, it's, it's worth re-looking at, but on our level, it's, again, the Armory's, you know, we're strapped by finance to what we can do. you know, we're strapped by finance to what we can do.
Thank you, RJ, and Paul, for bringing for the, a couple additions to the communications. Are there any additional reporting from Jeff Passby?
I just got three quick items. One, that we do have a VZA case Tuesday night for a variance for parking because of the roof line's being changed on a structure on Court Street. And I apologize, I forgot the address, bring it with me. It's about the Chapin Jewelry's residential up above.
What do you mean by the roof line?
He's meeting bad dormers to a structure because he wants to provide individual bedrooms versus one big bedroom, which he has now, so he needs egress requirements. And that would take a variance to do so. So, that's what the request is for.
The variance is for parking?
The variance is for the parking. Because he's changing the roof line of an existing structure.
And this is in the B2D zone, I think?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, it's on, isn't he on North, yeah, North Court? Excuse me, South Court, I'm sorry. I said North, but I meant South.
What do you, what is your sort of inclination of what the VZA would do?
I don't guess on that anymore.
I know City Council would not approve of this, of that sort of, in that B2D area. I mean, that was the big reason why it was...
It's an existing three-bedroom or four-bedroom, wherever unit it is, and it's one big bedroom. And he wants to subdivide the bedrooms into, or the room into smaller bedrooms. By doing so, he has to provide a window for egress purposes, and that's what the dormer is for. But by changing the roof line footprint, you say you have to bring it into compliance, and he does not comply with the parking currently, so...
So, it's not increase the density?
It is not increase the density.
Change of the roof line?
Change of the roof line, that is correct.
But it does increase the density because of the parking?
No, it's already in existence because of this change.
Oh, I see, okay. I understand. Okay. Now, I, I thought you were thinking, I'm thinking like this space is sort of like attic, and he's adding bedrooms.
It is an attic space, but it has a dormer-type structure on the back, almost like a saltbox-type.
Okay.
What else?
Just to announce, as we discussed a little bit ago, new solidway patrol officer has been hired and started this week, and he's actively pursuing, or pursuing the streets right now, so... And then, the third thing, maybe we go into the minutes, but in the integrated services, there's a part that I explained, if the project was approved by the commission, the later substitution would be requested. We're having that researched. I don't know if that is correct. I might have been incorrect in that statement, and we are checking on that, so that they can put back to the VZA for a request for a substitution. That might not be possible, so...
After, because they've already received approval from the commission?
Because a substitution for a less objectionable use would be formally on a non-conforming, and it is a conforming use. So, the one that got approved by the planning commission is approved.
Oh, had we approved it? Yeah, see, I was thinking, we should have done it the other way, where we approved the non-conforming use, or, by the way, still have to go back.
Because we needed a variance, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So, that part's being reviewed, but I just wanted to clarify that that statement that I made in the minutes here may be incorrect, that they could do that.
Okay. Any questions? Paul, did you have any additional reporting?
Yeah, I have just a few other things.
I'm sorry, Paul, I thought you were...
No, I was actually still under three communications, not four.
Oh, I thought we were...
So, are we in four now?
I had left a little bit, and Jeff, he got really eager during the third additional comment.
I'm sorry. That's all right. Just a few other things. I am still working with Rich Campatelli and the Arts Parks and Recreation Board. They would like to have some sort of a master plan, so Rich and I are working on a few of those issues, how we should proceed, but we'll be working on that over the next several months. I will be meeting next Wednesday with the Athens Municipal Arts Commission. They asked me to come and just discuss planning issues and how it relates to AMAC and those types of things, introduce myself to a few of their members. We should, I will be putting together some sort of a follow-up meeting on the Armory over the next two weeks, not, don't have a date. And I would like to be clear on that, RJ. I'm not driving the Armory discussion at all. I don't want anybody to think that I am the driver on the Armory. I'm being a realist with that building, and I'm skeptical of every idea I've heard so far, and I do think a market study would be extremely important for it. So, I don't want anybody to think that it's my goal is to have any type of a use there, but I do believe that the use should be fully vetted by the community, and we're going to need some community support to get any type of funding to fix that building and to get it up to speed, so... But I think it's important that you really come to those meetings and be involved with that. And I don't want it to just have people running away with one idea and not having anything to back up why they want to do that, because there's substantial investment coming in there. But it was thrown on me to organize these meetings, and so I'll be doing that, but anybody who wants to be involved should be involved with it. Additionally, I have been asked to present, up in Cleveland in the beginning of May, ODOT is having what they're calling a Healthy Communities Active Transportation Conference. I was approached by an employee of ODOT who's organizing this conference, and she asked me to come and give a presentation on how a small city with very limited budget puts together a bicycle pedestrian plan. So, with, well, we'll be working that out with the city, but I would expect to be up there next month for a day. I'm also meeting with an OU graduate student in environmental studies on Friday. He will be putting in, I believe, if we can reach an agreement, $100 hours of service, as is required for his graduate degree, doing research and developing green infrastructure policies in related to our stormwater management ordinance that we're slowly working on, so... All right, now.
Any questions?
I already did mine.
Sorry about that. It's nice of you to go first. Opportunities for assistance, speak about items not covered in the agenda. We did have a couple public hearings today, but if anything else. Announcements and other business? Our next meeting is scheduled for April 20th, 2011. This premise, we will be discussing agenda items, I guess, soon, because that is only in a couple weeks. Disposition of last week's minutes, or last meeting's minutes, everyone have a chance to review them, either prior to this meeting or after this meeting.
It looked to me like Klein was spelled wrong a few times in there. K, it should be with a C.
In addition, I would request that if there are action items, that we get those followed up on, in terms of...
Just at the front, maybe, or...
Because we voted on an item that I don't believe took place, so...
Fell through the cracks, part of my fault.
All right, so adding action items and going with C, L, I, N, E for Klein. Move that we accept the minutes.
I'll second.
Bye.
Okay, at this point, we will adjourn today's meeting. Thank you.